I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Delka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence, reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, please state your name and address and come to the podium.
Aaron Stacey Roberts, 411 Almond Street, basically here on a public safety matter. And as George Bush Jr. once said, Mr. Hall, there is good and evil. I didn't understand it, but I'm finding it to be true in what just happened to you. The evil is what happened to you and Mr. Quentin Hart, Mayor Quentin Hart, and your children. The good in it, as far as I'm concerned, is I went to the city of Waterloo. Dan Trackle and Buck Clark was the mayor at the time with a photo of a person in case 9914612 who went in the restroom sexually assaulted my daughter, which was a rape, the men that he penetrated her and a kidnapping the moment she wanted to leave that bathroom stall. I came to you, Mr. Trackle, with my concerns like Mr. Hall was able to do and Mr. Hart was able to do. What happened between me and you within one week was I was put in a psychiatric setting saying I was suicidal, homicidal, delusional, gonna shoot up City Hall. That's what you put on me. And I still wear that jacket, man, today. But during that time, I kept on my, trying to discover who this was. You did not look up one time on the computer. You did not try to investigate it. You still to today sit here and you have not contacted me back about the threats made on my life. The threats, nigga, we gonna kick the door in and kill you. You have not contacted me back and you sit here like everything is kosher and it's not. I did my own investigation while in the penitentiary. I kept this. Anybody that came and communicated with me, they gonna see this. A guy out of Des Moines told me it was policeman Sergeant Tedesco. I come to find out his name is Charles Tedesco. You could have found that out when you were busy trying to put me in the nut house. You have been a part of a cover-up that has to be exposed. You talk about being able to play with your children out in the front yard. I haven't talked to my daughter in 11 years because she said, Daddy, they said if I keep communicating with you, they gonna make it worse on me. It's time for the county to do something about this. I don't know what you gonna do. Contact the White House. Do whatever they did to get your case handled. Because it's not gonna get any better, Dan. You have children. Your children can be done just like his. They can be done just like mine. Will not communicate with you. Put them on the Stockholm syndrome. It can happen. I told you that day, I'm in tailless spiritual warfare and I have a 13th legion of angels of terror, death, and destruction. I'm not running around with pistols. That is not my job. My job is to inform that you are a part of the problem and for you to be another, take Tony's place, who just lied on me two weeks ago. We need to get some serious people in here. Otherwise, you guys are creating a very, very hostile place. And you need to stop, Dan. You understand what you did to me and you need to snitch. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the board at this time, either in the room or on Zoom? All right. Hearing none, we will now move on to, we have a presentation. This is Cedar Valley Arts and Economic Prosperity VI Study from Chris Hale, the Managing Director of Cedar Falls Community Theater and Limelight Cedar Valley member.
All right. I was just taking a moment to share my screen, so hopefully the folks on Zoom can see it. If you can't, just let me know. Good morning. My name is Chris Hale, they then pronouns. I am the Cedar Falls Community Theater Managing Director. I'm also a volunteer for Limelight Cedar Valley. I'm coming to you on behalf of Limelight Cedar Valley to share some really exciting study results that we just released in February from the Arts and Economic Prosperity VI Study in collaboration with Americans for the Arts. So for folks who might not know who Limelight is, I'd like to just give you a moment to understand. Limelight is a volunteer organization simply aiming to elevate the arts here locally in the Cedar Valley. We define the Cedar Valley as the six county region, not simply Blackhawk County, but knowing that Blackhawk County is our largest county that we cover. We do this by nurturing and supporting artists and arts organizations through advocacy work, through marketing, and through programming, mainly programming around connecting artists and arts organizations to resources and to each other. We know that there are a lot of folks in Blackhawk County who do arts work, arts and culture work. We don't always collaborate across as you might expect. Limelight serves as a ground for us to meet together, to do collaborative work and to further our community. We know that when a community is arts-rich, that it is a more prosperous community. It's a community that's more economically viable. It's also a community that folks want to come live, work, travel to. And Limelight serves as a way to elevate the arts further to achieve those goals. Quickly, what to expect, just a brief overview or an agenda for the presentation. I'll share about the results from the study. I'll share how we are utilizing the resources and just share ideas about how we can utilize the data. And then lastly, I'm just gonna share about the importance of the arts locally and what we can do to support the arts as key decision makers in our county. You guys all know the power you hold in supporting the arts and I'm grateful for the work that you do each and every day. This data is simply to support that work and those decisions that you make. Quickly about the study. It's a large-scale, year-long study on the impact of economic prosperity of the arts. It also measures the social impact, but as Limelight, we're a little bit more interested in the economic impact just because that data didn't exist previously. We weren't able to say things like how many jobs the arts supported in our community. We weren't able to say how many tax dollars are raised through arts and economic, sorry, through arts and cultural activities. It's conducted by Americans for the Arts in partnership with local organizations. So the Cedar Valley is one of 260 communities in the nation who participated this round. They're conducted every five years, so this is the sixth one. So if you do the math, that's 30 years that this study has been around. It's pretty comprehensive and I'll dig a little bit into the methodology next. Before that, actually, this is just the six counties region that we surveyed. So Grundy, Butler, Braimer, Chickasaw, Buchanan, and of course, Blackhawk, the largest one. The AP6 measures the economic impact, like I said. So that's tax revenue, employment, household income. It also measures the social impact of the arts, so the social value of the arts, how they instill a sense of pride in our community. That is a little bit easier to understand. It's something that arts organizations have been saying for years and that the general public understands as well. There's a reason why we send our kids to piano lessons. There's a reason why we have season tickets to the Waterloo Community Playhouse. There's a reason why we go to the Hear Center in our community to see public displays of art. But what was missing, like I said earlier, was the economic impact. We weren't able to assign a real dollar amount to that. And I'm excited that we can now. Now the study methodology. So primarily was through, our study was through audience surveys that was administered and built by Americans for the Arts. Limelight served as a conduit, someone who took the surveys and went to all of these amazing events in our community over a year-long period. We collected 800 anonymous audience surveys. It asked questions like, how much money did you spend to attend this event? It asked questions such as, in addition to this event, did you spend money in food and beverage industries? So did you grab a dinner before or after? Did you grab drinks after? Did you go, did you have to hire childcare to take care of your children while you attended this event? This is all important to us because it shows that the arts, a single arts event can support many sectors in our community, can stimulate the economy in many different ways, not just in the arts and cultural sector. The study also utilized organizational surveys, so we surveyed 100 organizations within that six county region. They self-reported things like expenditures made in the year-long period, audience at their events, as well as employees that they have. We looked at nonprofits. We did not look at for-profits, arts and cultural businesses, or individual practicing artists or freelance artists. We looked simply at the businesses currently. I'm not an economist. Maybe some of you folks are, so you would understand this more, but at the time I did not. Americans for the Arts use an M-Plan software. It's an economic software to utilize input and output models to deduce the direct, indirect, and induced economic impacts of the arts. You'll have access to the full study after this. You can read a little bit more about it. Again, it's like a 60-page study, so I won't go too deep into it today. One concept that is helpful to understand is how a dollar can be respent to measure economic impact. So I'll use my own organization as an example. We're building a set. We need to paint the set. We go to a local hardware store and spend $200 on several gallons of paint. That hardware store then uses the money to pay their sales clerk. That sales clerk can go to the grocery store and buy their groceries for the week. That grocery store can then pay the person who sold the groceries and that person can then go pay their rent. That's all economic impact within our community that stayed within the Cedar Valley region. Of course, that money will eventually trickle out, but this concept is just a way for us to assess how a dollar can be respent through a single instance, through a single action that the community theater in this example took. Now the fun part is the numbers. So I'm excited to share with you some really exciting metrics and some exciting data points. Again, the real goal in Limelight conducting this study was to share the real impact of the arts because as I said before, we know that when we have an arts-rich community, the whole community thrives. And that's really what our work is aimed to do. So during the survey period, the arts and cultural sectors spurred 129.4 million in direct economic activity. Breaking that down further, 109 million, 109 million was spending by organizations and 28.4 million was spending by audiences to attend said events or around those events. This supported 1,545 jobs within the arts. That's not simply the employees at an arts organization, like my salary, for example. Arts organizations are businesses. We employ freelancers, contractors. We need people to build the sets. We need people to run the lights. We need people to fix the plumbing in the building. We do business and so we employ tons of folks in our community. Tons of folks benefit from the arts organization existing. Breaking these numbers down even further, 49 million was personal income paid to residents by arts and cultural orgs and their audiences. The tax numbers, 9.5 million in local tax revenue, 11.6 in state tax revenue, and then 6.2 in federal tax revenue. The biggest source of programming for an arts organization is our events. It's the shows you go to. It's the galleries you walk through. It's everything in between. $28.5 million in event-related spending by arts and cultural organizations and their audiences, sorry, was reported in this study. We reported that 1.3 million were in total attendance to in-person events in Blackhawk County. Again, a lot of that goes through the organizational surveys who self-reported, who attended their events in a year. Who went to the Gallagher Blue Dorn, who went to the Symphony, et cetera. Of those folks, on average, people spent $21.75 per person per event outside of the cost of the ticket. That's important again because we know that when we have an arts event, money is spent around the community, not simply at the organization. This is again an average, so you're thinking 21.75. That's not a ton. Thinking about the different events we were at, from free events at colleges where folks might not be spending a ton of money, right? We were all in college once, through larger events, large-scale events where folks are spending a lot more money as part of that event. So the average is 21.75 per person per event. Additionally, we know that the arts are a driver of tourism and the economic impact of tourism in our community is well-known to all of us. 16% of the folks surveyed, so 16% of the 800, were reported as non-local, so outside of that six-county Cedar Valley area. Of that 16%, 93% of those folks said that they were specifically in this area for the event they were attending. That means that if we did not have that event here in the Cedar Valley, they would have traveled elsewhere to spend their dollars. They would have lost that, we would have lost that revenue as a community. Unsurprisingly, the dollar amount spent outside of the cost of the event is higher for someone who is traveling in because they might be getting lodging. They might be eating more meals in our community, et cetera. So that number is 31.51 spent per person per event in the non-local grouping. A big piece to what we do is volunteerism. We know that we need a lot of volunteers to do the work that we do. So this is again from the organizational surveys reporting that there were a total of 5,641 volunteers who spent hours at an arts and cultural institution. Organizations reported an average of 112.8 volunteers. I don't know how you can have a .8 of a volunteer, but again, averages do that. Those 112.8 volunteers contributed an average of 35.2 hours each for a total of 3,970 hours per organization in volunteerism. Putting that to the dollar of an hour, that's $5.6 million donated basically to an arts organization. We share these numbers because it's impressive. These folks gain something from volunteering. I am sure everyone in the room has had the opportunity to volunteer in their community and if you haven't, please do so. You get something out of volunteering. You get a pride, sense of pride in your community. You gain skills. You gain relationships. There's a social impact to volunteering. So we wanted to showcase that. We also wanted to showcase that there's a reason why we need this many volunteers. Maybe we don't have the support that we need in the arts and culture sector that makes this work necessary, that we need so many volunteers. Nonprofits in every sector can relate to this. Volunteers are needed, but what would happen if we supported the arts just a touch more and were able to fund more for the organization and fund more staffing? I won't spend too much time on this. Again, the resource you'll get after this presentation has this full document. There are 10 areas in Iowa who participated in this study. We're really proud to say that we came in second in regards to economic activity in Iowa, only second to the greater Des Moines area. Unsurprisingly, it's a large metro. But what is surprising is communities like Ames, Dubuque, Davenport, Johnson County did not report as high of economic impact using the same study, the same partnership with Americans for the Arts. This is helpful to us because there's this idea that because Blackhawk County might not be gigantic or because the Cedar Valley might not be gigantic, that we don't have a ton of arts experiences. We're not an arts-rich community. The data goes against that, right? We have something to be proud in in our community. The last piece here, I won't spend too much time on again because we understand this. We've been saying this for years. We all know this, is the social impact of the arts. So 84% of folks said that this venue, this event, is important to my community. They'd feel a sense of loss if that activity or venue simply did not exist. Everyone, almost everyone said that this venue that they attended spurred a sense of pride in their community. That same percentage also said that they would travel elsewhere if they were not able to attend that same event. Again, this means that our local audience are saying that they travel elsewhere to spend their dollars if they do not have arts experiences in our community. So the more that we can present art in our community, the more we can keep local dollars in, and this data supports that. Wrapping it up, why it matters. So it helps us realize our identity as an arts-rich community. Again, there was this notion even as artists that we're kind of second to other communities. Maybe that's not the case anymore. Maybe we can have a little bit more of a pep in our step. Maybe we can take a little bit more pride in the work we do and realize that the work we do matters in our community. And lastly, it just realizes the contributions of the arts. Again, now we have economic impact numbers that we can use in our grant applications, that we can use in our advocacy work, that we can use to share the work that we do and to garner support from our community. One of the last things I wanted to share is that this data is not, to Limelight, this data is not helpful if it's only shared in our small group. So we've been doing work like this to bring it to the larger, larger community. So we've been meeting with different granters, decision-makers, legislators to share the impact of the arts in our community. We also wanted to share this data with our artists and arts organizations. So we held an info session. We've been sharing kind of training sessions on how to utilize this data. So when they go and advocate for themselves, that they have something real that they can use in things like grant applications or proposals. If you scan this QR code, you'll receive a one-sheeter. Also, I sent it to Supervisor Schwartz, so hopefully you'll be able to share that out later. It'll have the full study, that 60-page document. Obviously, I did not print that for you. That's a lot of paper. Also gives you a one-sheeter of the results, so kind of a bite-sized way to look at it. Something also interesting is that there's an economic impact calculator where artists and arts organizations can input their own data and it'll give them, using the same M-Plan software, give them a realistic look at what their individual impact was in the arts in our community. And it also has some advocacy tools. So that QR code will take you there. There'll also be a document coming out with more info. Lastly, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for taking the time and having me here today. I'm appreciative to Supervisor Schwartz for inviting me to speak with you all. If you wanted to keep up with Limelight or send me an email or anything like that, our website, Instagram, and Facebook is there. You can find our email on our website. We have links to all of our, what we have coming up. We have links to resources, all the good stuff. Thank you so much for your time today.
Oh, thank you, Chris. I attended the February launch and I thought it was such fascinating, good information that I wanted to have it presented to the whole board. One of the things that I found most intriguing, too, is just a point of pride that, you know, that we came ahead of communities like Johnson County and others in our total economic impact in the arts. And I think that so often we undersell ourselves in community in so many different ways. And so it was, it was good to see those kind of hard numbers validating what I always kind of sensed. And the other thing that I thought was interesting was the amount of people at that launch that came from elsewhere but came to this community, to live in this community because of the arts. And I was one of those. I came here because when I was looking at colleges at that time, you and I was one of the top three jazz programs in the country and the Gallagher Blue Dorn was ready to open the next year. It's gonna be the newest performing arts center in the Midwest or the first new performing arts center in the Midwest in 25 years at that time. And so it was kind of those exciting kind of opportunities that existed here that brought me here and kept me here. And I know that that story is told many times over in this community. You folks have any questions or about? I'll be sharing everything that Chris has sent me with everybody.
I wanna look through this, just wondering, were like festivals, was that a part of your equation or are those, were those separated out?
Yeah, events like festivals.
Perfect, yeah. Thanks.
You bet.
All right. Well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will now move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $269,919.38. And from the Sheriff's 6040 Fund, we're paying $2,972.72. Everything appears to be in order. Nothing really significant today. Any questions for me?
Any questions, Ward? All right. We do have a motion and second. This is a resolution. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Delka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Resolution is approved.
Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Roads update this morning. Our motor graders are out on the pavement, the gravel road system this week. We've had some oysters, so that's helping. They are hauling some spot rock as needed to isolated areas and then they've already started the mile rock for the year. The Cedar Wapsie Road Bridge over Crane Creek, that replacement project is going well. We're getting closer to having a pre-pore meeting, which is held kind of as a trial run for the deck pore. So hopefully that's just a week or two away. And then we did hold a pre-construction meeting last week for our paving projects. That Aspro is our contractor and that work will start in mid-May. And that also includes that closing of Canfield Road over Interstate 380. So hopefully, most of the planting by the area farmers will be done before that road closes for the paving. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facilities Director. Just wanted to give a quick update on the progress with the courthouse remodel. You may have noticed the last couple of weeks was a little loud throughout the building through our demo phase. We are finishing that up. We're moving on to the framing phase, which will be a lot less quiet. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for their patience and tolerance throughout this process. It did get pretty loud there for a while, so, but we're right on schedule as the schedule's laid out. So we'll be giving more updates as we progress, but so far, everything is going very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads?
Not a department head.
Gabby DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator. I just wanted to give you an update on the CGI video digital project that you approved. I think it was March 26th. We've been having preliminary meetings with the sponsorship, sales part of their group, the account executives, and we'll be having production meetings in the next week or so. The outcome, as a reminder, will be six to eight videos produced for free. They are soliciting or offering businesses the opportunity to sponsor, but it's not contingent on us getting the videos produced. So the produce, videos will be produced to the, for the county for free and will be housed on our website and then also shared through social media. But I did want to let you know where we are now. So last week, we sent a letter from the board that could be used to introduce the project to area businesses. That has started. We gave them kind of a starter list of businesses in the area, but then they have a lot of resources they use to kind of compile businesses and this is for the entire county. And so they have started that process and as I said, we have a very pre-production meeting next week. And I'll give you an update after that, once we kind of finalize kind of the topics of the videos. But I just wanted to give you an update and see if you had any questions about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads, either in the room or on Zoom, wish to provide an update? All right. We will now move on to the minutes approved from the April 16th and April 18th, 2024 meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We will have two hearings coming up later in the meeting. One is a hearing slash bid opening for the asphalt parking lot, concrete curb, and gutter repair project. And the other is an ordinance in number 77-285 rezone request by Russell O'Connor. Next up, we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Delka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
All right. We will now move on to other business. This is a item mine. This is a resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Farber Specialty Vehicles Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio for the purchase of Mobile Health Clinic funded through American Rescue Plan Act with a total bid of $551,726 be awarded and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Blackhawk County Board of Health and Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Caitlin?
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, Blackhawk County Public Health Director. I just wanted to kind of give a little summary. I think you have everything that came through email with the timeline, but I just wanted to give a little summary. The Board, a year ago, approved for us to proceed with the Mobile Health Clinic project up to a total cost of $600,000. So I'm glad to report that all of the bid and contractual documents are under that, that cost. In January, on January 5th of 2024, we released the request for proposal and noticed a prospective bidders. January 19th, proposals were due. We received one bid, which we opened, and it was a successful bid. We published our public hearing on January 16th and held the public hearing on January 31st at our regular Board of Health meeting. The Board of Health did review the bid and provide approval to award the contract to Farber Specialty Vehicles. And we did need to do some specification negotiation with the company and our clinic team to get things exactly kind of the way and our clinic team to get things exactly kind of the way that we wanted them. The initial bid was a longer unit, and we wanted to have a shorter one, but still have the number of exam rooms and the dental equipment needed and all of those things, which has kind of resulted in the delay from January until now. But we are ready to go, and the vendor has asked for four hundred and forty working days to complete the project from signature of contract. And so the estimated completion will be no later than October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Other questions for me?
Questions? I'm excited that it's moving forward. I wish it was sooner, but. All right, this is a resolution. If there's no further questions or discussion, roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item B, this is a resolution to approve the twenty-eight E contractual agreement between Blackhawk County and the city of Raymond for a purpose of providing law enforcement services effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents be approved as recommended by Tony Thompson, Sheriff.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, this is Tom. I've always felt every year that there should be a three percent increase. We had increase in our wages with the sheriff deputies. We had to buy new squad cars at control out there. They should be sharing in that cost, too, if they want protection out there. So I think there should be a three percent as there has in the past. Just because there was one last year, doesn't mean there shouldn't be one this year, because our costs went up.
Well, in the interest of, I, I, I agree with Tom. We should be at a three percent increase as a measure of principle, as he outlines. We've taken increased costs in that department. The cost of that service has increased, and so, and three percent is less than the cost of that department has increased.
Yeah.
And so I think it's perfectly reasonable to, to make that amendment to the motion.
Do we want to make?
I agree.
That was my concern, that others in the county were subsidizing services for Raymond. However, the language in the twenty-eight E agreement is brilliant. Both sides feel like they're coming away winners.
Yeah. Mike, is there a problem? We, we can amend that, right? Our, our resolution today, or?
The Board is passing a resolution, so yes, it can amend it. And since there's been a motion for the resolution, then there should be an amendment to amend the resolution.
A motion to amend?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to amend the resolution, increasing the dollar outlined by three percent.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? This is a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. All right, we will now move on to a vote on the resolution. If there's any further discussion or questions? All right, this is a vote on the resolution as amended, increasing, reflecting a three percent increase. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is a resolution. That's a letter of support for Cedar Falls Local Housing Trust Fund that will assist with affordable housing in the city of Cedar Falls be approved, and the chair direct to sign the same.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Really quick, my understanding is that by establishing a local housing trust fund, the city of Cedar Falls will be able to access two hundred thousand in state funding. I think that they have to do a fifty thousand dollar match on their end, but this is just a letter of support to help them secure that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. It is now nine thirty-five AM. This is a hearing slash bid opening for the asphalt parking lot, concrete curb and gutter repair project. Item I, this is a motion to receive and place in file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received.
Second.
Uh, any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is item three. This is a, bids to be received and open and read. Bid deadline was three PM, Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. Just wanted to summarize a, a bit what this project is going to encompass. It, because it is quite large, what we're looking at is the courthouse parking lot. We're looking at doing some concrete improvement near the dumpster location here on the southwest corner of the parking lot. We're going to rework the stormwater intakes. We're going to repair all curb and gutter. We're going to do asphalt patching and all-new pavement markings throughout that parking lot. Now, the next one will be the employee parking lot. That's going to get a, a total asphalt resurfing as long, as well as pavement markings. The sheriff's office parking lot, concrete curb and gutter repair plus pavement markings, pine crest, concrete curb and gutter repair and pavement markings there as well. We did receive two bids. You should have a bid form. First one is from Aspro out of Waterloo. Oh, and the budgeted amount for this project was three hundred thousand. It looks like we did receive the bid bond. All right, this one was sealed up pretty good here. It's like for Aspro out of Waterloo, we have a total bid amount of one hundred and seventy thousand six dollars and seventy-eight cents. One seven zero 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 six point seven eight. Next one is from Boulder Contracting out of Grundy Center. Bid bond received. Total bid, one hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. One eight three eight eight five point eight five.
All right, thank you.
That is the total received.
All right, we'll move on to item four. This is a motion that the Board of Supervisors, review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I did just want to real quickly say thank you to our engineering department for overseeing this one, putting this project together for us, particularly Chad Weiser with the engineering department, put a lot of effort and a lot of, lot of time into putting this together for us. So I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to E. This is, it is approximately nine forty AM. This is a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two eight five, O'Connell Rezone. This is a motion to receive and place in file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier in accordance with requirements of Code of Iowa, and publication was approved and the requests submitted by Russell O'Connell at three nine three five Gilbertville Road to rezone one point five seven acres from A Agriculture to District to AR Agricultural Residential District to build a new single-family home.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Next is a motion to close the hearing as oral or written comments were received and placed on file. But Chris, go ahead with your.
Good morning, Board. Lexie Schneider, Planner. The applicant wishes to rezone one point five seven acres from A to AR in order to construct a new single-family home. The applicant does intend to remove as few trees as possible during the construction of the new home, and the site has a land evaluation score of forty-four and a LISA score of one sixty indicating low agricultural value. And a small portion of the rezone area is located within the floodplain. However, the area that the home will be constructed is outside of the one hundred-year floodplain. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request for one with NAGL voting no.
Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak to this today? Yeah, come, come to the bottom. Just state your name and address.
I'm Russell O'Connell, thirty-nine thirty-five Gilbertville Road. She pretty much covered it all. I purch, I'd like to purchase the land from my neighbor, build a house behind my house. We're going to do like in-floor heat, a slab. And I am very, I'm a conservation guy, so like she said, I'm going to take out as few, fewest trees as possible. There are quite a few dead ash trees in there that I will have to remove. Other than that, I'm going to try to keep as many oaks as I can. And there are some hickory in there also. So that's kind of the plan, and anyway, that's what I pretty much got.
I appreciate your efforts to preserve the trees as much as possible. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this? All right. Were there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This is a resolution. If there's no further discussion or questions, roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance amend, or the ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six has amended the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection two eighty-five to section six, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Russell O'Connell, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two eight five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. We'll now move on to item ten. Any reports or information from the Board?
Yes. I wish the state would do more to address our mental health concerns.
Second.
I just want to take a quick second. You know, obviously, it was reported this past week about the, the ugliness and darkness that I've sort of dealt with for the last six months. And, you know, want to say thanks to my colleagues here, to other elected officials, staff, community members. You've all been a, a source of light throughout this, various points, and, you know, I've received some calls and text messages and emails and that sort of thing, good ones this time. And yeah, recognizing it's Dan's point, mental, mental health is a real issue. That does not free folks from responsibility. But, yeah, just wanted to say thanks to everybody.
I just had two things. Yesterday, I went and toured the Cal Congress grounds, and I encourage folks to take an opportunity to do that. Just to, I know it's a place we've all been out a million times over the years, but it's just good to see, first and foremost, how it is today and, and, and some of the needs that are out there. The other thing, I did mention kind of casually during the, the budget process about, we were kind of lamenting over the, the wind project that we once lost. And I'd, I'd like to have the Board maybe take another look at our wind ordinance to, to see. Some of the feedback I heard at that time was that ours was more restrictive than, than most places, and they could have reapplied, but it probably would have been appealed and appealed again. And so I want to take another look at that because as we think about the need for new revenue streams for, for county taxes here in Blackhawk County, that would have been a really big one that would have gone a long ways to, to filling a lot of holes this last year. And we're going to need to look at those kinds of things going forward in the future. So I plan on having a couple of work sessions, also working with Mike and others on, just looking at what, what could be done on, along wind, but also, I, I don't believe we have in place a, a, a utility solar ordinance. So I think that that's something we should be looking at, too, just so that if an opportunity would come, that we're, we're prepared and ready. With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign. These meetings adjourn. Thank you, everyone.